We'll wait for Mark to come in. Hi, Mark.
I'm a bit early still.
Where's Bill?
I'm at the gun.
I'm playing again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dan, are you on?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm here.
You want to do a long-distance prayer for us from Phoenix or Mesa?
Sure. All right. Dear heaven and thine, we thank you for the opportunity to gather together for the purposes of this city meeting. We pray that you watch the activity tonight and it may be pleasing to you and me too. Go ahead, Mr. Sir. Your name is great. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dan. And thanks for joining us today on vacation. Reading approval minutes from July 17th, please.
Motion to approve and suspend reading.
Motion by Act, second, second by Stern. Discussion. All in favor of the minutes, say aye.
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 Opposed? Same sign. All right. Minutes are approved. Approval of the agenda, please. Any additions or changes or corrections to the agenda other than under five B, it's gonna, we're adding on the comprehensive plan.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, motion by Pillar.
Second.
Second by Hack. Discussion. All in favor of this agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. All right, five A, engineers' report. Monty, what do you have going on?
Nothing really to report here in the grant. Have no action items on this report. Work is slowly continuing on. We've built on expedition estate. The CIP software is still being developed to meet our needs. And all the other general items, the street project is slated for next year's construction. So, basically, just more informational than anything.
Monty, and I don't know if the kids in the city, have they decided, has the state decided yet, on a design?
We have not been notified of any of which options they're gonna leave us.
Okay.
But they'll probably go to...
The stop logs would be...
That's what I was thinking too. I should know, but it's a file.
I would guess the stop logs.
Do they, were they gonna, I thought Moore had some pretty very numbers for us on the alley.
He doesn't have them as yet. He will have them when they come to the next meeting hopefully, so. He has, he was roughly at a hundred dollars under that, like two hundred dollars concrete.
Does that include our parking lot on the west end as well?
Don't believe it did.
Okay.
I'm not sure how bad that parking lot really is.
Well, I was there today and the garbage truck beats that thing up pretty darn good.
That northwest corner as well, that you're doing, or something like that for like two years.
Yep, and then the southwest corner is getting...
Getting beat up.
Getting beat up. Actually, we've got some pretty good weeds on, that are ours on that corner that are right by the dumpster from the thrift store. Yeah. All right, moving along. Five B, Renaissance Zone Expansion and Renewal, and then the Comprehensive Plan to, to, pull those together. Monty, you want to touch on that or Buster?
Exactly, Mr. Landowski.
Yep, okay, Buster, go.
Okay. All right, so I've inundated your inbox, email inbox with a lot of material in the last couple of weeks. But, so, tonight, basically, what I'm hoping for is an adoption of the Comprehensive Plan. And part of that needs to be done in terms of the Renaissance Zone. So, one of the pieces of the Renaissance Zone is, is our plan is actually due to expire here in the fall of eighteen. Uh, excuse me, back up. In eighteen, it was approved. It was a five-year plan, so in twenty-three now, in October, November, it's gonna actually expire and we would have had to renew, go through the process of renewing. Okay. So, what happened in the last session of the legislature is some of the laws have changed relative to renewing the plan. And previously, it used to be you could renew for five years. Now you can renew up to ten, which is a nice thing because you don't have to come back and do this quickly. In addition to that, the committee, my committee, uh, looked at our Renaissance Zone and decided that we should add some blocks to the Renaissance Zone. Cities that are our size, okay, less than five thousand, can have a Renaissance Zone of thirty-four blocks. Okay? So, we had thirty-three blocks, or excuse me, twenty-three blocks originally plotted out. We took a look at the map in terms of where things were at. And so, the plan was to extend that by ten blocks. And I believe I sent everyone the map, uh, so that you could take a look at it. So, basically, we're going west. And then out here on four, up in, across from Senex, and that's gonna take us all the way across up to and including the hotel. Okay? And so, for instance, now, the old H&R block, the building that went taken down, that with approval, if you approve the Renaissance Zone, that will be in the zone now. Okay? So, but it's part of all of this, not so much for the adding of the blocks. Adding of the blocks, we need city commission approval. Okay? For the extension, for a ten-year extension of the plan, we also need Hazen School Board approval and also County Commission approval. Received, granted permission from each of those, and indeed, I have the paperwork to follow the school system, County Commission. Uh, that information is pending, but it was approved. I went to the commission meeting on Wednesday, this past Wednesday, and it was approved verbally and I did remind, I will need, and also, the minutes. So, basically, what is contingent on all of this then is, is that uh, the city must have an updated comp plan, okay? Our last one was done in two twelve, okay? And so, actually, the timing on the partner planning grant and doing ours, it really fell into place quite well. So, that's in place. And then, in addition to that, so subsequently, what I did, because of, in anticipation of the city approving the new comp plan, the goals and objectives, which also need to be sent in to the Renaissance folks, partner commerce folks, have to jive with the Comprehensive Plan. So, I went through and renewed, or not renewed, but updated all the goals and objectives uh, for that based on the comp plan. And then the final piece that also needs to get submitted is the blocks that were added, okay? We have to, uh, do an update of our eligible properties. So, all of that list of eligible properties has been completed as well. And I believe, if I remember correctly, I believe that we added sixty properties that are gonna be in the ten zones, that I could identify. Some of them, of course, realize now, when I say properties, some of them are vacant lots. Some actually have, uh, residents on properties, you know? For instance, I'm just gonna use, uh, let's just take the, while the H&R block, okay, if that building still had been up, that property would have been identified. Okay? So, it's a combination. Now, the other thing to keep in mind about Renaissance Zone is that you must have both residential and commercial properties as part of the zone. Uh, so that's another key element of where that's at. So, uh, I'm anticipating, uh, that with approval, if, if everybody's, if the board's inclined to approve those, you need to approve the comp plan, the atom blocks, and then also the Renaissance, the ten-year renewal. So, it's three things, basically. My hope would be then to turn all of that information around, get it to commerce for that, for them to process. I had a conversation with a couple of people up there, a lady up there. She said that it wouldn't take very long for her to approve the plan. You know, probably a couple of days, which would be a good thing because we do have some pending properties that could possibly take advantage of that and they can't do anything until, actually, the plan's approved. And when I say approved, approved by commerce. So, questions? Yes, sir.
So, I guess I'm just gonna say that, you know, you know, like the Williams, Williams area, you know what I mean? I just don't think it's right that, you know, you know, I mean, even if you wanna build, build, I guess, a new home, you know, you know, all of that there is, then it's like tax-free, and then after that, then, you know, you know, I guess the rest of the people, then they just need to pay their share, so.
But, but, one thing about it though, Casey, is this. When you say tax-free, there is an abatement, okay, that is given. Okay? But long-term, you know, eventually, that abatement goes by the wayside. So, when you look at it in relationship to long-term, what that does, if you can get people to go into those areas, what that does long-term then is increases the property value of the city. Okay? So, in the past, and I think I put that in your packet, we, we have seen the property value of just zone projects, okay, over the years, increase by a million and a half dollars. So, when you take a look at that in terms of what that does for the mill levy in terms of what's coming into the city, long-term, it's a, it's a good benefit. It may be at the beginning, it's a, sure, there's some abatement that is given. The thing about it is this, though, as a commission, okay? The difference is this, is that you still have final say on whether or not you approve an abatement or not, and if you do, for all law.
Right.
And I will add this, though. So, under the new law, they changed the abatement period, which could go from five years was previous, and it could go up to eight. That's the new change. And that's both for residential and commercial. And then, of course, the other piece to that, which is outside the purview of the city, is in the mix. But that would be like, everybody would be on their own anyway. Yeah. So.
I understand what you're saying, Casey. I totally agree with what you're saying. Not agree with, but understand where you're coming from. TSC would not be there if we didn't have that opportunity for them, what, eight years ago or whatever? Yeah, it does, it does seem kind of unfair that initially, that's the way they're getting that abatement, but it is paying off to have that now. There's Ken Miller the other day about, you know, students and bringing kids into our community and, and families. What do you, the foundation aid payment from the state is up near ten thousand dollars per student. And getting, let's say, a person out of their home that they've been in for twenty years and know that one of the plans is to build more of the, you know, single-level homes, like Buster lives up there. And getting those people into those types of homes frees up more real estate and stock to buy for younger people, get those people out of community or those families those homes. I think it's, I think it's important that we, I've always been a big proponent of the Renaissance Zone project. And I think it's, it does hurt upfront a little bit. I had to pay for my own myself too, but I'm not opposed to, you know, hoping that this will benefit our community as a whole.
Good questions. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, take action then on this. Um, it would be those, the Renaissance Zone Expansion, the Renewal, and the Comprehensive Plan.
I, I think I, if your question is to combine anything, I would leave the Comprehensive Plan by itself because it is totally separate from the Renaissance Zone.
Okay.
Because you went through the process of updating the Comprehensive Plan so you can decide on your future growth areas and stuff, so. I would leave that one separate.
Okay.
In my opinion.
Make a motion that we approve the proposed Renaissance Zone Expansion renewal.
Motion by Hack.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Pillars. Any more discussion? Roll call.
Hack. Aye. Pillar.
Aye.
Stern.
No.
Omenhour.
Aye. Motion carried. And then we wanted to tackle the Comprehensive Plan at the same time.
I'd make a motion to approve the Comprehensive Plan.
Motion. Make the motion by Pillar. Second, second by Stern. Discussion. Roll call.
Pillar.
Aye.
Stern. Hack. Aye. Omenhour.
Aye, motion carried. Thank you.
And good, good job on everybody's part participating in that.
Five C, Resolution Directing Assessment for the alley, the alley project, this is the alley project behind West River.
Correct. This gets the ball rolling with the Special Assessment Committee of the values that they have to do. I did include the buy-down like we've done with all the other projects of ten percent, which I know was disgusting to hearing on this. So, the total cost to be assessed is fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars and thirty-four cents. It's just that one block area that was part of the district.
And we do need a motion.
Yes.
Approval. Get them all up. Motion. Motion by Pillar.
Second.
Second by Stern, discussion. Roll call.
Pillar.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Hack. Aye. Omenhour.
Aye, motion carried. All right, thank you. Moving on, a request of citizens, Chalk Fest three, Lauren, you're up.
Thank you.
Update, yep.
Yeah. Jason, you were here last time. I don't think we're gonna have a schedule. Yeah. I bet you guys.
I do.
Um, so I just wanted to talk tonight about a couple, now, Chalk Fest has come right up and we've been flying for a year and at this point, we're just kinda getting down to the details. So, I have a couple of things to ask you, um, that would require the city's help at this event or to get ready for this event. So, the park board will bring us a bunch of picnic tables to go under the big top tent. And so, that's, that's, um, okay? The, the one thing I wanted to talk to you about was barricading the street. So, this year, um, we're gonna be doing something different on the street. We're gonna be creating a big quilt with all the public chalking. And so, we have to prepare that ahead of Wednesday because it's kind of a big job to get that all marked out and gridded out. So, would it be okay to close the street, say, by four or five on tree day?
The fifteenth.
And then have the sweeper run through just right before, you know, last minute? And then we'll get to work and do our thing, and then it would be closed off till Friday morning or?
Same, same section, right, here?
Yeah, from Joy Den. I think we went a little ahead of Joy Den, some of the libraries.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think that's right.
So, if that would work out, that would be fantastic.
Yeah, that would help that.
And then, um, dumpster, can you guys bring over a big, you know, because we'll be serving big meals and?
Yeah, we sent one back there last year, yeah, we sent one back there.
Okay, and then would you pick it up on Thursday morning or empty it so you have room in the dumpster for Thursday garbage?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, right? And then, I don't know, did you bring us some garbage bags or liners or anything for those?
No, thank you guys for loving bags or whatever.
Do we even have, did we use liners last year for those, those rolling back?
We just did a lot of scooping up and putting it in bags and putting it in the dumpster and?
There's two green cans there. If you bring a couple more green cans, I'd be happy.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because I don't, we don't even have liners for those big green cans.
Well, well.
I'd take a pretty big liner.
That is a big liner, yeah, yeah.
Maybe, yeah. They have, they have little metal cans that are parked out usually always out there.
I think a couple more green.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Dumpster would, would work out fine. And then we do have, I hope, Monty, that Mr. Crossy was here to get the alcohol permit squared away. Okay, and then last year, Mark and Pat were caught.
Less cop, more serving. That's not the definition of entrapment. I don't know what it is. I mean, I'm painting out a business card at the same time. Here, you got, you, you missed her.
We saw a few beers or a few, I mean, it's, it's, it was just more of a curvy.
Yeah, it was, yeah. With the tail garden, it stayed better.
Yeah. So, anything from anybody here? Do we still, I'm assuming the football team's gonna help?
Yep. With the ten?
Yeah, they've all been lined up, I think, four o'clock and fifteen. They want cookies and water and? I don't know how many.
Supper?
Last year.
Sandwiches.
Last year, what did they give?
I don't think they wanted really to eat before they went out to practice.
Yeah, that's true. They, they kinda got out of there pretty quick last year.
Yeah.
No, I'm excited for Lauren. It's a lot of organization, a lot of work, and it brings in a, a lot of people for our community that don't, they, they ball stuff like this.
They do.
And it's, so it's, uh, it's pretty cool. Last year, I was amazed by the people from Monticentro.
Yeah, giving out apple.
Yeah.
It's great, yeah. So, please come. We'd love to see you all. You two with your cup, your cup.
And there's, you can still see some of the squares on the side of the, on the main street there. Yeah, they, they did it. It's pretty awesome.
Okay, well, we'll see you all next week. Thank you for all the help.
Yep, thanks. Good luck. Okay, uh, six B is free reduced hall rent for senior center. C is free reduced hall rent for medical benefits. And then, and then F is also free reduced for a medical benefit. How do you guys wanna tackle these in a group or individually?
Make a motion we approve B, C, and F.
Okay. Second. Motion by Hack, second by Stern, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Um, D and E. We have a raffle for Hazen Dollar First Scholars, and E is a, a raffle for free-rode carton.
Make a motion to approve all the permits.
Thank you, Dan. Motion by Pillar.
Second.
Second by Hack, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Down reports. Nine A, water sewer.
I have nothing towards this meeting, thank you.
Uh, street cemetery.
Well, we've got, we've got our mower out at RDO. As well, our earlier, it's small fortune. But I'd, I'd like to definitely, I don't know if you guys would be in favor of seeing another quote? I'd like to do that first before we, is that gonna hinder us with mowing or anything like that?
No, no.
It's been out there for several weeks.
I did talk to RDO and they're having opened up pricing or selling of a new machine, just like the trouble you have with the towel or whatever, but I'll get a hold of them.
Yeah, if we can get a break.
Or just to get some kind of ballpark price on that particular price.
For both, yeah, just so we can. And then, I don't know, you know, Monty was saying earlier that if we did go a Toro, we'd have to take things down to Mandan, you know, so we have to weigh the pros and the cons.
Now, that's if there's a dealer for the big machine at Mandan. I doubt, I talked to this gentleman, where the nearest dealer would be for the big equipment.
You know, if you're looking at Mandan, you know, there's a Kubota dealer as, as well, you know? I, I don't know a lot about them.
Someone or whatever, see what they got to offer.
Yeah. You know, nineteen thousand dollars to, to replace the engine on this, I mean, fifty thousand for a brand-new one. I mean, I'm frustrating at best, but hardly a deal. I don't know what John, would they buy our old one back?
He said it may be without a thousand dollar trade-off.
A thousand dollars?
A little bad motor, he said they'd have to stick the motor in if you do whatever, whatever, crack cart or ball.
Or if there's a, I don't know if that's the industrial one, I, I really don't know. I'm kinda with Jerry. It's like, we bought it seventeen, but, uh, made it. I don't know.
We never had troubles with ones in the past. I don't know what happened with this last batch or whatever. About to fill all this, bend the machines that would have them, I sort of with the city or whatever.
But just explore some more avenues for us before we make a decision, if you don't mind.
Yeah, no, I can.
If we can do that decision the next meeting.
Did they say, uh, getting a new engine for this ground here, how long would it take and all that stuff?
He didn't, I, I didn't ask. All he said was it had a two-year warranty.
We already have detachments for this.
We already have, we have, yeah, all the attachments are interchangeable. If you change brands.
Yeah.
Buy another set of attachments because they won't be interchangeable. That's one of the downfalls.
Yeah.
They're expensive.
I could, I'll ask them too, what kind of a trade-in like I would get if you put a motor in it with a two-year warranty, you would think that would, would increase the value or whatever, so.
And outside of that, um, getting outside the ordinary D?
I had Matt Lewis stop out at the shop this last regular event, the old shop where it leaks like a sieve. Just kinda coming out all of a sudden, Matt come over, I asked him to come over. He thought I meant one or two spots, but it's gotten numerous. There's actually some started leaking while he was there looking, so he was gonna put a price together for replacing the roof on the building.
Is it cracking or is it?
I don't know if it's rusting out or if the big windstorm would maybe loosen some of them panels, but he said usually when they start leaking in that many spots, it's usually a rusting problem because of the roof is worn off.
That's the old.
The old half.
That, that was built, what, in eighty?
He's thought seventy-seven, seventy-eight.
That's the original roof.
I'm, I think so, Scott Daniel.
Yeah.
He did call this morning and he was gonna give us a price to just replace like fourteen panels or to do the whole roof. He said it's in the screw lines, so he's thinking it's rusting through.
Well, that's, that's, all about pretty, pretty good for that. All that's, that's, all about pretty, pretty good for that.
John Gary Lawrence done the two hoses of every place on that, that's back in service.
How have you guys been handling trees, you know, at the storm? I, I.
We've taken down a few that were dangerous. We've been taking down some of the hanging branches and any of the dangers, we've been taking care of, a little bit approving when we get, when we get a chance, so.
I'm noticing more piles that people are making on the curb. I think they feel like we're going to take them up. We can't continue to, it's hard, you know, some of the boulder trees, it's hard to know what's theirs and?
Everything cleaned up pretty much by, I think, Wednesday. So anything off there and all would be coming out of the backyard or? I did have a few phone calls, I told people, we do not take them up if they drive into the dirt if they came out of the back. We have all our boulder stuff cleaned up.
Did you see that down tree by the lift station at the Enchained Park?
Yeah, we cut up a bunch of that and drug it up on the side, that baby drop.
Okay, so it's still there?
I don't know if they worked on it occasionally this week. I don't know if they worked on it. Later, we got everything cleared out, the waterways off on the side, what's laying down. And if we do get rain, it'll flow by and out of them.
Okay. Then I noticed that by our lift station by the city, by the parts right building.
Yep, there are three branches in there, but we were going to work on that, but that, well, three foot of water is still sitting around. So we'll probably work on that just.
Lucky didn't damage the lift station.
Yes.
There are some.
Big trees over there.
Monty, with that, is there a way that we could maybe put that out on Facebook?
On the notice.
Yeah. Then the notice maybe on the app?
Yep.
Because, yeah, I, I don't like that idea. I mean, I, all my branches are still laid at the back yet, my backyard still needs to be cleaned because we did it right before it went to State Legion and? And not unless you want to come pick them up. I'll definitely call them to the boulder.
Only if you guys tell me to.
That's all I have.
Thank you. What's the library? There, I guess they're just looking at, I guess, uh. Looking at policy change about, I guess, getting rid of their old books and I guess bringing in some new books. Okay, that's all I have.
Make a motion to select.
Oh, okay. So then two. Over on our old van, this is van that was done. I guess last year and stuff, they had much problem with it and stuff. So anyway, we would then, we would then like to put this van out on bids. And after that, then I guess buy a new van, so. So I guess with that, I guess that move, I guess that we put our old van. Old van. Hold on, Dan. Okay, we have Bush by Stern.
Second.
Second by Hack. Roll call.
Stern.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Omenhour.
Aye, motion carried. All right, thanks, Casey. Um, Dustin's not here. Is there anything else on HCD?
No.
Okay. All right, and I was just going to talk about the interviews that we had for Public Works and Forestry. And that's the next thing on the agenda, so we'll just kind of go into that, I guess. So we, we had three interviews. And they all did a nice job. I was kind of happy that we had three pretty solid candidates for this position. But ultimately, I'd like to offer the position to Mike LaMaire for Public Works and Forestry. And, uh, the one that does is frees up a position that Mike will be leaving. So we'll, we'll talk about that in a moment, but, uh. Monty, do we need a motion or anything to, for, for Mike?
We've generally done that in the past, yeah.
Okay, okay. Um, the interviews we had, Dan was on a couple, um, and Dustin was here. Was he? Oh, that's right, he did not, yeah, yeah. Who else is in the city?
Dave.
And Dave, yeah, yeah. So for the, the questions for me or for Dave or Dan about the applicant, applicants or interviews, you have to then obtain those discussions. If not, we'll take a motion to approve moving Mike into the Public Works and Forestry position.
Make a motion that we proceed with that.
Motion by Hack. Second, second by Stern, discussion. Roll call.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Omenhour.
Aye, motion carried. Can we talk about the position now, Monty, right away? Okay. Uh, so the other two applicants we had were, again, very, very good applicants. John Martenson, is that right, Martenson?
Margeson.
Margeson, yeah. Dave was here for that as well. Guy that moved his family here from Pennsylvania. They moved here in December. Perfect time to move to North Dakota. And, uh, I'd like to offer him a position to fill where Mi, where Mike LaMaire is vacating. And, um. And that'd be a combination position as well. He'd be doing just what Mike was doing and then probably even a little bit more, um, on the street side as well. Monty, any more we need to discuss on that?
No, because basically we'll start on that 85% of the bottom wage in the department, fully water-based water.
Yeah, okay. Uh, he has a lot of, John's got a lot of experience, uh, ways worked, uh, construction, concrete. He's a welder, runs equipment, uh, mechanic.
We have a set of blueprint equipment.
Yeah, yeah. So, uh, wants to work and he's working now, but the job is working now, he said, I started at nine. Because I was, I, I need to work at seven. I need to work all day. That's refreshing to hear that. So, um. Do we need a motion to operate that position as well, Monty? So we'll, make a motion by, excuse me. Motion by Stern.
Second.
Second.
Second by Hack. Discussion.
So then on the job duties, it'd be, I guess, like water treatment or ex-water department and a couple of ones. Like garbage truck two and all that stuff.
Yeah, everything.
Pretty much the same way that.
Yeah.
And Jerry, you talked to this gentleman about picking up spraying, credit?
He said he'd be interested in it, as did the other, you know. But it's not, it's not contingent on the, on the offer.
And then Jared would be in the same position currently?
Jared would be the lead in the water.
And then he would?
Well, Dave's the lead, but the.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
He would, Jared would move up and, or he would move into Jared's.
Yeah.
Correct?
Okay, we have a motion to have a second, you know, the discussion. Roll call.
Stern.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Omenhour.
Aye, motion carried, thank you. All right, we've done a twelve, uh, 2024 preliminary budget. We had a nice meeting for about 45 minutes before this meeting about the budget and Monty put a lot of time and effort into this and I think we, we came to a consensus on the, on the on what we wanted to see for the preliminary. Is there any other discussion that we want to have or need to, about the preliminary budget?
The only other thing we would do is see a second time for your public hearing on the final budget, looking at your regular meeting on October 2nd.
Okay, sure.
Anytime after September 7th, but before October 2nd.
Okay, all right.
Would that work for you, Jared?
Um, I got it updated, but it's on my phone, so I can, I'll go check and do that, Monty, tomorrow.
Would that be at a specific time?
We would set it for six o'clock because that's normally on the app.
Do you just want to know, then, Monty, when Jared have made two or?
Yeah, I'd do that, or if you want to.
I think we just set it at that now, yeah.
I can't see the calendar from here, but is it on Tuesday?
No.
Monday?
Monday, October 2nd.
Right behind you, Casey.
Oh, there it is.
Mike, do you need a motion for the preliminary?
Yes.
Okay.
So.
Motion by Hack on the 2024 preliminary budget approval.
Second.
Second by Stern. Roll call.
Hack. Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Omenhour.
Aye, motion carried. Two thousand, or, thirteen on the, on the agenda. Public comments, nobody here from public other than media and Esther and lawyer. We'll pass on that. Approval of the bills. So then I guess that moves to through the bills. Motion by Stern.
Second.
Second by Hack. Roll call.
Stern.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Omenhour.
Aye, motion carried. You need a journey? Thank you. Dan, when are you getting back?
Wednesday.
Okay. All right, enjoy your last week.